It's been twelve o'clock and hopefully it's going to be a good afternoon for us as we go back through some more of the budget. Thank you all for joining us and I wish I had to, yeah. Last time we looked at some adjustments to the budget, we approached it as looking at the seniority level of each of the council members. We have four different proposals from four different council people and the most senior among that group is Councilman John Camp. Yes?
You know, it took twenty years for someone to give me that specific recognition.
My vice chair reminds me, reminds me that I, and I really can't seem to get in the hang of this, of reminding everyone that this meeting is governed by the Open Meetings Act, which is posted at the back of the room. Councilman Camp, would you help us understand your suggestions?
Okay, and I don't know if our audience has that, but I think my colleagues have it here in the printout that Angie got to us. I have eight items on there and I'll just go down in order on them. The first one is really more of an earmarking. There's three hundred thousand dollars in the budget for a new ambulance. And my thought is, you're all I'm sure aware that we have these boxes on the backs of the ambulances and it's the chassis that wear out. An industry standard say you should be able to change that three or four times. So, there are a number of things here. We heard during some of our public hearing that the availability of chassis and all is somewhat limited due to a movement of a plant from Mexico back to the United States and so forth. So I'm just asking that we direct that that three hundred thousand purchase five new chassis. They're about sixty thousand each, so that we'll have them there and then our maintenance group can ship the boxes over. So that doesn't solve a one-time need, but rather helps us phase in so we can provide the ambulances as we need them.
So when you discuss this with Chief De Spain, what was his feedback on that?
I did not talk with him about it. I talked to some of the other people in the organization.
Would it be helpful if we asked someone to come up and speak to it now?
I'd be glad. Pat Boer is there.
Chief De Spain unfortunately cannot be here today, but we want to warn him who's all the best place the inside is available.
Oh, he is. Okay, where's Mr. Boer? Oh, right there.
While he's coming up, do we, would we like to take one of these at each one at a time or go through the whole list? Thank you very much.
Well, I, I guess while you gentlemen are here.
Since this is one at a time.
Well, I think I had several that refer to fire and if you'd like, I could.
We'll start with the chassis and then move through the fire.
Good afternoon.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Depends on what, depends on how late you work and how early you get up.
Yes, yes. What's your first question?
Well, I'm proposing, there was three hundred thousand in the budget. I'm leaving it there. That was for an ambulance, a complete ambulance. I've checked some things on Marketplace and so forth and then looking at our whole ambulance fleet, we've got the removable boxes and you can replace those on the chassis. And it's the chassis that get all the primary wear and tear. And when they do relocate or remove them and all, you upgrade electronics and all. In fact, I don't, Mr. Warnock, you might be the one to describe that and see if this would fit in with your needs so we could have some of those.
Yeah, Mr. Camp, so there's a couple of things we need to look at and one is, is how many do we need to remount in the next two years? I agree with you, the remount program has been, has saved about eight hundred thousand dollars in the last four years. But we only have two that's going to be eligible to be remounted in this next biennial. So, again, with, it's such a dynamic situation with chassis availability and then the bill times for medic units have gone from two hundred to three hundred sixty-five days. So, it's going to be tough, but we could remount two. The Dodge chassis are difficult to get, but they provide us with the best, in terms of long-term care and availability in terms of miles. But only two is going to be eligible out of our medic unit fleet to be remounted in this biennial.
Well, this would help you then. That'd be twice as many as the one that want to purchase a new one.
Yeah.
And then if, and I'm, and maybe you can't buy five there. I was assuming sixty thousand of chassis, you might have some conversion costs that need to come off of. But if you had a chassis or two on hand, would that help you in the future so if there's an emergency or you could start a phase-in program to change them?
Certainly, it could. Again, with Dodge moving that plant from Mexico to, back to Detroit, it's caused some lag and they're going to be nine hundred chassis available next year only from Dodge. Dodge is superior in automotive or in the chassis industry for a distant second. So, if we could purchase two, which we'll need in the next biennial, that makes some sense. And new, a new medic unit now is two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The same medic unit that we bought in 2010 was one sixty-five. So I would agree with you in regards to getting a couple chassis, which we will need in the next biennial.
The cost of the chassis is only part of the cost of the remount. The remount's probably running in the neighborhood of about hundred twenty.
Yeah, so we're saving a hundred thousand dollars when we, when we remount. Sixty thousand for the chassis, you know, thirty-five to forty thousand for labor and then additional upfitting that, lights and things that we need to take care of when we do it.
Well, what a hearing, what Mr. Boer just said. If you did two remounts, so you buy the chassis and do it, so that's a hundred twenty each, that's two forty, so that leaves sixty. Or you mentioned the availability, now would it make sense to use that remaining sixty to buy another chassis so you have it on spare?
If I knew that we wouldn't be able to purchase Dodges in the future, I would, I would agree with you. I think that once Dodge gets back and their plant starts to run in Detroit, those chassis will become more available. But the Dodgers are by far the best choice for the city.
So what would you recommend the allocation of the three hundred thousand?
I would, I would recommend that you leave it there with the flexibility of doing the chassis remounts, which we will. At some point, we have a couple of year two thousand medic units, one at Station Eleven and one at Station Five, that we're going to have to address at some point and purge. I think we'll do that this year when we, when we get a couple back from remounts and we'll be able to shift a few things around. But I would recommend that we leave that and let us make those decisions.
And I concur with that recommendation. Could, you know, at any, any given point in time, you just don't know what's available on the market, what we need to do. We had a catastrophic failure of one of our medic units and now it's out. So I would leave the three hundred. I would recommend leaving it there for us to make the right decision at the moment when, when, when the time comes.
You sold me.
Councilwoman Lamb?
You just, you just said you were going to remove it, right?
No, well, the three hundred's in the budget and I'm, I'm giving them discretion, but I'm putting a strong emphasis, I think those chassis make some sense from what I believe. And I think I hear you agreeing.
Our history, our history shows that, yeah.
So, are you withdrawing? Because then we're leaving it as.
Thank you. So what I'm hearing is that it both saves money and time in doing the remount. And I'm just wondering if the way that it's in the budget, it is currently as flexible as you're asking for it to be. And we might need to have finance come up and answer that question.
Well, it does say a new ambulance and maybe we could strike that and just say for.
Ambulance needs, yeah.
Yeah, so do you have an answer to that, whether we, will it take just a change of language?
Well, I would just point out that on page eighty-three of the mayor's budget, there is a comment that already indicates that the three hundred thousand for the fire apparatus is for the purchase or remount of ambulances. So we wanted to leave it to their best discretion originally anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
My next.
You have some other fire issues you'd like to address while they were here?
Yeah, I think a couple of them here are on that. I brought up, and I think Ms. Gaylor Barrett's going to be addressing it too. She had proposed, I think continues to propose that four point nine million be taken from our cash reserves and that it go to parts and also fire apparatus. And I just want to renew with you my concern that I think if we're going to take any of our cash reserves, and I'm very hesitant to do that because we've never done that before. But if we did that, then I strongly recommend we use that to reduce the unfunded accrued liabilities. So these are accrued liabilities. And then because of that, we'll get savings because on all those unfunded accrued liabilities, we have an interest factor of eight percent that we pay. And with that eight percent then, I'm suggesting that that's roughly four to five hundred thousand. We could then use that to purchase fire apparatus. And hopefully in our discussion today, we can get a timeline and source of where we're talking. Because we're talking about a number of different areas for new fire apparatus and I'm kind of confused on the timeline and everything. So that's my commissar, welcome any questions, but if you'll join.
I'm sure that the folks who are here could elaborate on this, but in some of the work that I did to prepare this proposal, I mean, you've mentioned before, it's about priorities. And the reason I went this route is because I feel like this is an immediate priority. And while the pension is absolutely an eligible expense for this kind of cash reserve money and is an important expense in the city, I think that the cost savings of repairing the fleet are greater than the pension interest payments, both in terms of dollars and lives on the line. The addition of new apparatus will help in terms of lowering the risk of breakdowns and toes and outside repairs and all the maintenance costs, which I'm sure that Chief Warnock can elaborate on. And if we don't budget for these significant expenses, if we did, for instance, put it towards pension, we would still have, we'd have, the likelihood of having to issue debt is there. Because these trucks and engines, I mean, they cost like a million for a truck and four hundred and thirty thousand to five hundred.
Seven fifty per truck, five hundred for an engine.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars, up to a million dollars per apparatus. And so the likelihood that the chief would be back in front of the council asking for an emergency purchase is pretty high. And if we don't have it budgeted, we, you know, the likelihood of issuing debt goes up. And it's also worth pointing out that as we work to get the fleet healthy, once it is, we're likely to see significant savings, about two hundred thousand a year. So there's savings there as well. And there are relationships between the health of the fleet and things that save homeowners' monies. So, you know, our ISO rating, this insurance rating that we want to maintain is really important. And when that's a good rating, homeowners' insurance premiums are lower. Not to mention, if we have good apparatus, we're likely to improve the ability to minimize losses due to fire and of course, you know, lives. The pension issue, I don't mean to diminish it, but we do have a longer time horizon, I would argue, to address that issue. And I think we've done a lot of really good work to do that between the thirteenth check, between the legislation we passed that requires us to fully, you know, fund at the recommended level, which obviously didn't happen in the past and should have. We've, we've been dumping millions of dollars into the pension fund and we're finally at a point where we're close to eighty percent funded, which I think really shows our commitment and that we've made significant progress. So I think, given all we've done for the pension fund in recent years, and I, I agree that there wasn't enough done in decades that preceded that, your leadership in calling for that kind of attention has, has paid off in recent years. I think we're at a point where we can't afford to ignore the immediacy of the apparatus needs. And that's why I believe it's so important to use cash reserve. Again, it's a cautious, it should be spent cautiously and rarely, but in this case, I think it's warranted.
Well, if I could respond to a couple of things you said. We need fire apparatus situation resolved. I think you're emotionally charging it a little bit more than it should be. We have, on the property taxes that people pay, there is an earmarked portion that goes to the pension plan. That is an ironclad liability. From a financial standpoint, paying eight percent to the pension plan is ridiculous when we just turned around and loaned for, what, under three percent, twelve million to put new LED lights on. I mean, that five percent differential is expensive. And what I'm saying is with the savings on that, that would afford us to get a fire engine a year. Secondly, we've got Director Cassidy, who has proposed along, I guess the mayor's also suggesting we take the, up to two million dollar reserve and buy maybe three apparatus. So we've got that, the mayor already had in the budget, at least one, I believe, two fire apparatuses. The mayor, you know, kept a million dollars of the increase two years ago in the budget when he took us to court and that included one apparatus each year. I think we've got some that are on order. It takes a year to get the apparatus, so you're not going to get it that soon anyway. So I think that the numbers of fire apparatus are, I've asked for a timeline, I just still haven't seen it in the possible sources, but I think there's some duplication there. And, you know, we meet the need. ISO rating is a false statement. I went through with the property casualty industry, that is a small part of your insurance premium. Lincoln has a high rating, but the biggest part is mother nature. Hailstorms, tornadoes, that type of thing, if you look at that, and then liability if somebody's injured. And so it's kind of a, it's a, it's an argument that I'm sorry I can't agree with. It's just not that much that we're supposedly saving the homeowner and I don't want to give false expectations for that.
I would just say that there's nothing emotional about the numbers in Kendall's spreadsheet and the at least twelve apparatus, they're in need of immediate replacement. That's, there's nothing emotional about those facts.
And I, again, I have a question for finance. I'm wondering if maybe Sherry can just sit up here for a little while? If that would be possible, I'm sorry. So, because I just want to clarify a couple of things. I'm hoping that perhaps you can, I'm going to give her a second.
To gather up all my information?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have just told.
If I might add, I do understand how it can, how this can turn into an emotional argument. But I think, I think the data shows itself that, that a lot of our fleet is in the F category. Not long ago, we towed engine six from, from an intersection on Highway Two. All of our reserve apparatus, we can't move one up because they're all in the same condition. And as you indicated, they're four, build days are four hundred days. So our, our role is to articulate to you the desperate need and it is a desperate need. So I don't, and we're trying not to make it emotional, but just rely on the data that.
Can we hear it from Mr. Warnock?
I think, I think we all want to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars and do the right things. But we're not doing it in regards to, so we purchased a lot of our engines in oh-six for two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars and change. We have close to two hundred and thirty, two hundred and forty thousand dollars in, in repair costs in those. So it's hard for, it's hard to throw that type of funding and money at something that, you know, when you have fifty percent of the purchase price, you should be looking at replacement. That's across the United States, not just here. So it's tough to see that and, and when I'm ordering or trying to find some parts for some of these, I know that, that, I just don't think that we're being good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. Only my opinion, though.
Thank you. So what I'm wondering is, without what's been proposed by Safety Director Cassidy and without the removing money from the reserve funds, how many fire apparatus are in the mayor's proposed budget?
Five hundred thousand dollars is included in each year's budget.
Okay.
That's the amount that was built into the fire department budget the last biennial, or the last, at mid-year. And then there is the three hundred thousand dollars for ambulance repair replacement.
Okay, and is that three hundred thousand each year?
No, that is just in the first year, that's once.
Okay, and five hundred thousand in each year, so that's basically one unit in each of, okay. And then the proposal for the nine-one-one funds would bring how many if that passes, do you know?
I'm going to defer to you guys. What would you do with that? I think it's proposed at one point three or one point four million, correct?
So we could, we could potentially grab a truck and an engine. That's what I would propose if that were.
Okay. And then my, the major question I had you up here for though is, as far as the reserve account, our reserve funds, those are for emergencies, right?
You're talking about the four point nine million that Leon has proposed. Brandon, I'm going to defer to you on fund balance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, fund balances are for multiple things. They're for emergencies, they're fund balances, for rating purposes. They're for cyclical revenue fluctuations, you know, for example, water, they've taken the majority of their revenues in the summer. So, I mean, there's multiple reasons that you would have reserve accounts set aside.
So I guess what I'm thinking is that we're talking about the difference between probably replacing a lot at once or doing some planned replacement or placement over time. But if an emergency arose and the firefighters needed to come to us for other equipment, we could talk about paying for that out of fund balances rather than bonding. Isn't that right? Wouldn't that be?
We could, we do have, and the council has a minimum policy of twenty percent in place. In addition, you know, there's that policy, but we also look at this in the context of a rating perspective and how much we need to have in place for the rating.
So, and you had mentioned, I think, last time, we had about ten million more than what we had required as our minimum.
As the minimum for the council policy is.
And so if that trend held, then I mean, if we have it over the twenty percent, we can go and get it in case of emergency.
I think if you continue to comply with the policies that the council have in place unless those are changed.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gaylor Barrett?
I would just add to that, that while that's certainly true, we know the fleet's in terrible shape. We know that it takes about a year to get these trucks and engines on order. Fifteen months. Like, why would we wait until we have an emergency when we're already seeing our trucks and engines being towed and breaking down on calls? And luckily, we haven't had that result in a significant loss of life. But, you know, this is, this is happening on our watch and we need to address it now.
Some of the parts, even from our oh-fives, from the E ones that we purchased in oh-five, oh-six, we just, we can't find. So we're ordering, for instance, we're ordering radiators out of New York because E one cannot produce them in Florida any longer. So it's, it's just difficult, it's difficult to juggle, for sure.
Councilman Camp, and we all should be a little conscious of the time. We have a lot of material covering.
Yeah, well, I think this is probably the big issue across the board, but. Brandon, it just, it seems ridiculous to borrow at eight percent, you know, when we loaned at less than three percent to LED lights. In fact, you said there's ten million surplus out of our total surplus, out of our total reserves. How much is now in locked up for twelve years in the LED?
The investment LED program is twelve some odd million. That's split between multiple funds, so it's not strictly coming out of the general fund. From a balanced stand sheet or standpoint, when the rating agencies look at that, you know, they look at that as an investment. So, you know, it doesn't lower your fund balances per se because you've got that investment still on the top side of the books.
If you had a dollar you're paying eight percent on in a pension plan, would you rather do that or put it here where you get three percent? You're investing all these other sums at three, well, not even three percent, probably one and a half percent is your average return you're getting. So save six and a half percent. Is that a no-brainer?
I think it's a, it's a good policy discussion. You've got two good uses of two different types of items to purchase and I think that's what this body's deciding, so.
I'm not suggesting it, but it seems like it'd be smarter to go out and borrow, what, two and a half million out of that four point nine million at three percent and pay it into plan.
Yeah, I mean financially, what you're saying is it's, you're getting a better return on that investment. But it doesn't address the current needs, I guess, of the fire departments.
Well, that would address it. I'm not suggesting we go that route, but I'm saying that would, that would address it. And I mean, you're going to pick up a couple hundred thousand a year in interest savings, so I'm just, I'm perplexed with that. We're helping the fire department, the employees on ensuring that their retirement's there. And we didn't even follow everything that the pension committee recommended. We just took a first step and there are many steps to do. I, and again, I go back to the number of fire engines, we're now saying fifteen months to get one. It seems like we've got a number of sources here and I think even on the public safety items, we can get closer to two million. Maybe we don't, you know, the chief was, or the Director Cassidy was taking out hundreds of thousands for some other things and maybe we just don't need those. If we need the fire engines, I think that's more important than some curbs.
Councilman Christianson, Councilman.
Esquier, would you like to comment? I just want to just make a comment on using the reserve in general. I'm not saying I'm against it, but I'm saying I think we should be very, very cautious. I read an article today from the York Nebraska newspaper and how the city of York in two thousand and ten supposedly was going to dip into their reserve cash reserves for a one-time basis and it turned out to be a habit with them. And this year, they are claiming that they're going to have to almost double their property tax levy and eliminate all new hires from their city, eliminate all capital improvement projects, as well as eliminating any raises, longevity pay, anything for city employees. That's the situation they got themselves into over injudicious use of their reserve funds. And I just don't want to see the city of Lincoln go down that path. I can, and they were told for nine years, everything is wonderful, everything is great, until this year. And then they're in an emergency. So I don't want to hear people say, oh, that'll never happen to us, because I don't think York thought that either.
So you're saying that they dipped into it nine times?
Several times at least, but probably nine times over the last ten years.
There's always the first time.
Or eight years. But there's always, it started with the first time and with good intentions. And, and that city is in desperate straits right now. So I just don't want to see decisions we make here put us on that kind of path.
Thanks. Sherry or somebody, Kim, who's got information on what we've done with regard to pension payments over the last ten, fifteen years? Do you have, do you have that information?
I don't think we have available with us right now.
Mind, are we ahead?
The payments that we've made, pension, I mean, it's significantly increased over the last two years.
And in the, in the seven years I've been doing this, it's, it's been a steady increase that, that we've seen adding oftentimes a million dollars or more each year, as, as we've budgeted just more and more, and, and we're, we are at, what, 81% funded now, I think? And so, we, we're making improvements. The percentage or portion of the budget that we're expending on pensions is, is significant, way, way, you know, multiple times above what it was just a few years ago. And, you know, I've, I've been supportive of John in the past, and would still, in terms of, of what we have, what we're able to do, and making that a priority. My feeling, though, is, when you balance these two important needs, I mean, we're, first of all, in the business of public safety, above everything else. And when we've got fire equipment out there that's breaking down, when I've got a station in my district, firefighter says, you know, "I can't drive my, my engine fast," that, that concerns me. And, you know, I just, I feel that's, that's a priority that we need to, need to keep.
Counselor woman, Gail Abert. At some point, we were given a spreadsheet about the police fire pension contribution, and this is old because it only goes through 15, 16, but just to give you context, in the late 90s, the contribution, '97, '98, was $491,945. That was the city's contribution. The, it's 941,000 by '99. As you start to go into the 2000s, you get up over a million. You're at almost 2 million in 2003, 2004. By 2006, 2007, it's almost 4 million. And then, 2009, it's still 4 million. It's 4.3 in 2010, 5.6 in '11, '12, 6.4 in '12, '13. I mean, by 15, 16, we're putting almost 7 million, 6.9 million into the pension. So, you can see that we've, we've really ratcheted up these contributions, and part of that is dealing with the fact that, like, 11 out of the last 19 years, it, it was underfunded. That was as of, I guess, in the last eight years, from like, 2008 to 2016, it was much better in terms of the funding percentage, but the recession really hit the fund hard, and we've been playing catch-up ever since. And it is important, we need to make sure that we derite our employees, and continue to honor the policy that we passed. But, again, we are, we're at like, 81% funded, and there are a lot of cities in America who would like to be able to say they were at that, at that level.
Can we talk about this a little?
Yes. And I appreciate what you're saying, but I also think we need to appreciate the fact that a significant portion of our funding that's going into every year is interest that we, based on the deficit in there. And I think John's point is well-taken. If we could eliminate the deficit, we would eliminate those interest payments that we have to make. And that would provide significantly more funding on an annual basis for the ongoing needs of the city, in a number of different ways. So, while we have, I agree, we have an emergency without apparatus. But, we also have an ongoing illness in our budget based on this, these interest payments we're having to make, based on decisions that were made long before any of us, except for John, who were involved in the city government.
Well, I will take credit going from 900,000 to 8 million, and I comfort every year, and we were 105, 110% funded when it started, but I could see that even without the recession, we were just accruing benefits so fastly, so greatly.
Trying to springboard from Roy's medical analogy, we have a chronic condition here of me not keeping us on time. So, Counselor man, Camp, would you go back to your list? I think you've done...
Can we go to five? I think we're on five now.
No, we're on three.
Four.
Three relates to that.
But you're, we're taking advantage of having our fire representatives up here. Don't you want to talk about five?
Okay, well, four just gives us some more money that could be used for fire apparatus. Five, yeah, well, I'd like to know the timeline. I've been asking for a week or two, all these different sources, and how many fire apparatus we're looking at. Does it have a...
Counselor McCamp, is that a question for us?
Well, I'd send it through Brandon, and just to understand what we have on the timeline. We're talking about different places to get fire apparatus, and I just want to know how many we're talking about, and where those sources are.
Chief Board, do you feel comfortable answering that, or should we just release you and have the finance director come up? How do you...
Well, I don't, I don't know that I understand the question. I mean, I can tell you where, we've got one being built right now, I can tell you where it's coming from.
I think he's asking, how many do we need, is that right?
I'm trying to look, yeah, we're talking about some, Ms. Gail Abert's talking some from this 4.9 million, we've got the public safety sales tax fund, the mayor's added one in there, he added a million dollars in the last biennium, two years. I don't, I'm, I'm losing track of how many we have in total at this point in itemization.
Our, our message, message has been pretty clear, I think, in that we need nine engines and two trucks. And then, I also want to offer to you that we're building four new stations, two brand-new addition, additional stations, that right now, we're going to open and put a reserve engine in it.
Well, you're moving companies on two of those.
Two of them, yep.
In fact, you're not forgetting, they're all getting the same companies. We weren't increasing the number of companies with the new station due to just relocating companies.
We're building, we're building four new, and two of them we're going to relocate, and two of them will be, will be brand-new.
But they'll have companies move from other stations.
Personnel, personnel move, but potentially not apparatus move.
Until we can get enough personnel to staff them fully, they'll be kind of...
They'll need apparatus with them. That's how we sold it.
Well, again, the two that are relocated, relocated will take apparatus with them, but the two brand-new ones will have to take a reserve. And so, that will leave Kendall with one reserve fire engine for 16 total that are in service, so I just want to offer that for your consideration as well.
And opening up those two new ones with, with reserve apparatus puts us in a really bad spot, because with, with the training, and not to mention the calls that, that we're all hired to, to run, and the strict out-of-service guidelines, it's really difficult to, to manage that chess match literally on a daily basis. And going into the weekends, we don't know if, if, you know, if we're going to have a tow, if I've got a preventative maintenance schedule on one that I have to wait on because we've got multiple issues going into the weekend, so it's really difficult dynamic, for sure.
I guess we go back to the basic question, do we have a timeline, and do we have revenues, and how many fire apparatus, those are support, that are being talked about here?
Something like two coming in.
That's a question for Brandon.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can tell you the need, but I, the funding is for...
Do you need a chair, Brandon?
From a funding perspective, I think Sherry's told you, you got the million ongoing within the recommended budget. That's a million there, 500 in each year. You have potentially 2 million left over from the sales tax.
Potentially.
Potentially. And that won't be, that's, we won't know the final until everything's completed with that. Okay, so potentially 2 million there, and then there's, right now, a proposal by Council member, Leon Gail Abert, for 2.6 million coming out of reserves. Now, from what that equates to in total for apparatus replacement, I'm trying to look at the fire department. So, if you're looking at the 2.6 in two, and then the million, 500 in each year, you're looking at 5.6? My math is correct? 500, roughly 500,000 for an engine, and just under a million dollars for a truck, so...
And keep in mind, we, you know, in 2015, we found ourselves in Canada purchasing an aerial truck, but the fact of the matter is that these apparatus, the ones that are, that are, that are graded F, they're, they're so dynamic, and the patterns of, the vehicles that we drive all have patterns. These had patterns, but they're, they're so far past being able to predict what's going to happen next. That's where it becomes really, really difficult.
So, again, I'm trying to answer your question, Counselor McCamp. If my math was correct, and, and adding up what Brandon described, 2.6 in two, and a million, that's 5.6. And using the math that an engine is roughly 500,000, you can get nine engines and one truck for roughly 5.6 million dollars.
But you also have the 500,000 a year in the budget.
That's counting, that's the 1 million in the budget.
That's the one, that's the 1 million, 500 in each year.
So, like, two, two engines one year, an engine and truck the next year, two engines one year, something like...
It depends upon the allocation, when it arrived, but it's, but...
And from a purchasing standpoint, I think you would probably want to look at bedding all of this together instead of...
On a scale, savings, absolutely.
Don't buy an E1 engine anymore.
Other comments?
Just, yeah, to reiterate, the 1 million is likely to buy two engines.
Yes.
That's in the budget. The proposal to add, I think it's more like 2.4 million from the amendment, the cash reserve, is like, four engines and one truck, or six engines, and then...
Well, 2.6 will give you five engines or three engines and a truck. Again, looking at 500,000 and a million roughly for each, so...
And then, and then we don't know what's going to happen with the sales tax excess. That's a decision we haven't made yet, but that could potentially be another four engines or so.
Yes. If all of it were allocated to our deposit.
Yeah.
Other questions about this?
I think the brine plant that I had an item for, I know that there's been some rolling stock purchased, but I'd say, let's abandon that and put that for fire apparatus.
I think, and with that issue, I think we discussed that previously, is you're getting into the use of the funds, so money that's going in, that's dedicated to street construction can't be replaced for fire apparatus. There is some general fund money that has gone into the street construction fund, but at this point, it's fairly minimal now.
You're smart. We've done two and three-step transfers in the past to get money from point A to point B, to maybe go to Z and X to get it there, but you've done it, so you're right.
Is it fair, fellow councilpeople, to say we're, that we can release the fire department? Gentlemen? Yes. Thank you for your help.
You're welcome.
And if you want to continue with the brine, the finance director and maybe somebody could come up and talk about that?
Yeah, I mean, I've said all along, we should get rid of brine, because I think that's having a tremendous effect on our streets, and people's cars, even fire trucks rusting, and, so that's, I propose that we just get rid of the second brine plant, ultimately get rid of all of them. That'll come up more in the streets and roads bonding.
I actually brought you a gift today. I don't know if it's super appropriate, but I'll, I'll make sure I get it to you by the end of the meeting, because I really want you to fall in love with brine. It's actually a, a nationally best practice. It's used by every state in the country, except my home state of Hawaii, for obvious reasons.
Well, they get snow in Hawaii.
They do on Mauna Kea, that's true. It's used by over 200 municipalities. It's a very good program. It's, and I wanted to share with you today, if we're talking about the legitimacy of the brine program, I wanted to share with you, APWA, the American Public Works Association, has a nice little back sheet that you can hand around to talk about. The big thing about brine and why it might be misunderstood, and I'll just try to be as quick as possible here, rock salt or solid salt, it's simply crystals of sodium chloride. And until it has gone into solution, meaning melt snow, it will do nothing to stop snow from freezing to the pavement surface. So, agencies that use pure rock salt in their winter maintenance activities are doing so to create brine on the road surface. And so, what we're able to do by pre-mixing is actually reduce the amount of rock salt that we're utilizing. So, the other handout I want to provide you is why brine is better, safer, and cheaper, mostly cheaper and safer, is what we're focused on. Not only can we reduce the total salt tonnage, but we've also seen a decrease in crashes, but really, about a 43.5% reduction in cost because we do these premixtures. As you know, brine is mostly water, over 72%, but because we add beet juice to it, we are actually able to see a great benefit in being an anti-corrosion product. Because beet juice is sticky and tacky, it allows the brine to stay where it's applied. And there's a 75%, up to a 75% reduction in corrosivity because of, of beet juice. So, those are some facts that are out there. I think the other issue Brandon touched on is just the color of money that we have. So, we have a practice, if we ever dip into what remaining funds we would have for snow, the bottom line is we can't use street money on fire apparatus. Transportation dollars are restricted funds, just like water and wastewater. There are legal uses for those funds. With the $575,000 budget that we had for a second brine facility, we have about $68,000 left and available in that budget, because we're trying to get this thing built by this winter. We have a practice of allocating 85% of street funds and 15% general fund to that snow budget. If we take 15% of 68,000 that's left, we have about $10,000 to spend. So, those are just the facts. I know decisions have to be made at your level. We do believe this is a very legitimate program, and I'll get you your gift. It's a, it's a bottle of brine. I figure if you spend some time with it, you'll come to love it someday.
Have you accounted for well over 200 million in street damage?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Have you accounted for at least $200 million of damage to our street system because of brine and all the...
Actually, sodium chloride is not damaging to asphalt or concrete. Calcium chloride can be very damaging, so you have to stay within 1 to 3% for its application, so we have to be very careful. It's metals. Sodium chloride can damage metals and be corrosive to metals, and that's why we blend it with beet juice, not only to stay in place, but also because it actually is showing to reduce corrosivity of the, of the salt.
That brought up the second point. I, I've talked to several repair shops, and they're saying the brine comes in, it rusts their hoist within a day, and so forth, coming off of the snow on a car.
It's salt in general.
So, you've got that, because, I mean, brine sticks, like you said, and it sticks to pavement, the warmth of the tires also pull it up, it sticks to the cars.
Right.
And so, you get damage even to concrete surfaces in people's garages. But on the streets, the brine adds to the moisture content of the concrete, especially at the joints. And we've had a, you know, an insufficient sealing campaign. I know we're tripling from 400,000 to 1,000,000, to 1,000,200, but that's still minor when you consider all the cracks and joints in the city, and that just adds more moisture there. I mean, you look in the wintertime, and, plus, brine gets put down even before, and when we often don't even get a, a snowfall, just as a caution, but it's adding to that, and with the moisture that comes down, and then adding more of the melted snow and so forth, that's, that's what's causing the damage.
I'd like to know what your alternative is. We're reducing costs, we're reducing salt use, we're reducing crashes because of our brine use. It'd be nice to know what alternative product you would have us use, salt in general, has shown to be corrosive. That's something we've known for decades since, since snow fighting began. But safety is our number-one priority. We have to remove and de-ice, and remove snow and ice from the streets in the wintertime. We do encourage good, you know, rinsing of vehicles, making sure to wash those vehicles after a winter event. We do a lot of sweets, street sweeping in order to manage any residue on the street itself, but telling us we can't use salt for snow fighting is like telling a firefighter he can't use water to fight a fire.
I'm not saying...
So, what, you know, what other alternative do we have? We are doing everything we can to mitigate the use of salt so that it decreases corrosivity, but, you know, we don't have another tool or practice. So, I'd, I'd be interested in that, and maybe that's another conversation, but we'd like to know what your alternative is.
I think there are other statistics that talk about the opposite, and the damage being done to the concrete surfaces and so forth.
I'd, I'd love to see it.
Well, I think Senator, Senator Lonnie, out from the State Concrete Association.
Let's move on. Yeah, Counselor McScrooge, you'd like to speak?
Yeah, just part of our transportation study group. We, we did learn about the deterioration of streets and the concrete, and that largely was due to the, I don't remember...
Free spa?
No, I was thinking the mixture of, of the flash and, and the cement.
Oh, yes, from ASR.
Yes.
ASR is, yeah, it's affecting us.
And so, that, I mean, that, that's why our streets are, are poor. It's not a salt thing. It's, it's the mixture that our, our concrete was, was applied on many of our streets, 70th Street, a lot of different places in town, Rosa Parks, other streets that you see, North 27th Street, just so many places where, you know, you put new roads down, and within five years or so, all of a sudden, you're seeing bad things, and they should be lasting for... Just so many places where, you know, you put new roads down and within five years or so, all of a sudden you're seeing bad things and they should be lasting for triple that amount of time and that's, that's not salt.
Yeah, that's a, that's a huge, that's been a huge consequence to our streets.
When did we stop using fly ash?
Fly ash is still utilized. It's just the, it's the formula. It's the amount of fly ash in, in concrete that we've reduced.
When was it started to reduce?
In the nineties. This was from the nineties.
Well, that's what I thought. So we're looking at 20 years. We've had a lot of repaving that's gone destroyed. So I, that, I, if we talk about that fly ash, that's, it's a 20-year-old issue, so, okay.
Thank you.
We're, we're about halfway through our allotted time and we are.
Number six is pretty straightforward. Information Services wanted 300,000 to buy new furniture. I think we just saved that. I, I appreciate the desire to have that, but I'd rather have the savings. That's kind of a low hanging item and they've got furniture now and I know that's in your department, Brandon.
So a couple of issues with this. One, from a financial issue, this is utilizing fund balances that were in such a one-time expense. So seeing that moving forward as operational savings wouldn't occur because we're just utilizing the fund balance.
I understand.
Okay. Second issue, to me, it's more of an adequacy issue. So they're getting ready, they're preparing to vacate their current building and moving to the MSC. You know, right now, they've got 30-year-old furniture. It's different heights. They've currently in their, their setup, they've got a lot of offices. So they have more office-type furniture. They're going to move to more of an open-type setting with limited offices. So if we took all this old furniture and put it out there, for one thing, I don't see it as being adequate. It'd be a hodgepodge of lots of different types. So I see it as more of an adequacy from providing them with a good environment that they're going to be spending the majority of their lives in during this week. They're moving to a new space with a good place to be that they want to come to, in a basement.
The building they're in is not much different.
Garden level.
But I, I would suggest to you, when the Experian building was, the wholesale was proposed, Experian left tons of system furniture there, which is an open environment. And what's happened to that?
I couldn't tell you about the history of that, and we do have some furniture stored, I believe on the third floor.
I just think that at this point in time, that's 300,000, that's a low priority and we can do other things, you know, that, you know, heck that by 60% of a fire apparatus. Okay, so that's my point on that. Item seven, I appreciated my colleagues supporting the, the encouragement of urban development to market the Pershing Block. We're paying 100,000 a year, so that would be an annual. And I'd like to see that, 50,000 of that go to support the bridge that we're also all concerned about. And then the other 50,000, I'd like that added to the city council budget because although we're getting 50,000 in there now, to get the, I think the qualified person and with experience and all, with benefits and all, we'd be looking closer to 100,000 on an ongoing basis.
I came up to address the bridge, if I may, Councilman.
Sure.
We had a good discussion with Chief Blimoster last week. You know, that's a very important funding source for his, a important service provider to his organization. And he still thinks there's some room for some negotiation with a couple of other partners to potentially get that 50,000 dollars. So we're recommending to all of you that we go ahead and let him complete that. If he is not successful, then we would take the 50,000 dollars out of the contingency fund, which should be adequate to solve that for the biennium. And then we'd obviously, in the next biennium, have to find an ongoing source. But again, I, I think there's some room to get this money in another place. So I guess we recommend that you go ahead and leave it to that, or we will come back to you with a resolution moving it out of contingency if we're not successful.
How much do we have in contingency funds?
About 1.7 overall. We just went through this on the very issue, about 1.7, and then there's about 715,000 a year for the next two years, I believe.
That includes the 400,000 of the parking money, but there's 365.
40,000 of what?
Of the parking fund money in the future years. There's 365,000 of general fund money each year.
How much do we usually spend out of contingency a year?
That, that varies significantly.
Numbers or ranges?
It hasn't been spent that much. I mean, because we're, we're re-appropriating the balance that's growing each year.
Flooding in basements.
I'm sorry?
It was flooding in basements last time I recall. I think they, yeah, we were fortunate on that. It wasn't as much. Why don't we use 500,000 for another fire engine out of that? That's a heck of a contingency.
Well, I, I think contingency is, is for unanticipated expenses more so than anticipated expenses. At least that's our, been our view.
I'd say the fire apparatus is high priority. This is a good source for it. And then finally, number eight, the future additional Keno revenues. Moving forward, I'd like that to be used to reduce property taxes.
Can we use Keno for that?
allowable use by state statute.
allowable use by state statute is to reduce tax property or, or tax obligation on the part of the citizens. Is that right? For tax relief?
And we do that somewhat by, we have a 1% admin fee that's currently collected. That goes to the general fund and the overall pot that could potentially offset property.
You're talking about just the increase over what's being budgeted?
Right.
Mr. Johnson, you stood up. Would you like to help us with this?
If I could, please, and I'll be very brief. I think that continuing to direct the Keno, the Keno funds to the places that goes to the Parks Migration CIP and why it does reduce future property tax impact because we know that, for example, the Parks Migration Capital Improvement Program is about 80% funded. So the rest of that gap essentially gets made up with property tax, or, excuse me, could be made up with property tax. So if we limit the amount of Keno or cap the amount of Keno going into the Parks Migration Capital Improvement Program, that means that, that gap is going to have to be made up with some other source. And the most likely source is probably either property tax or sales tax.
I know, I know that there's a support for parks. There's been a lot of increases in the budget for parks. I think it's something that we've got to weigh carefully on what we do, and there's been proposals for other funds and so forth. There's a million dollars in there. They're suggesting we're doing matching grants. We drew some testifiers. They feel the capital projects should be done by the donors and so forth, but we should do the maintenance. I think I thought we were setting up these foundations to, these funding levels to do that. And I think we need to look at how we work with our partners there. There, there need to be closer match, so. Anyway, I just think we could do this.
Councilwoman Galore Barrett, would you like to comment on that also?
I'll just address the Community Challenge Grant Fund. Yes, the Parks Department, Lynn could elaborate, has done a lot to make sure that new projects have endowments so that we don't continue to perpetuate the maintenance gap issue. That is something they've been battling for quite some time. That doesn't mean that previously built facilities have that, enjoy that benefit. So, you know, the Teachers Fountain, the Air Park Rec, none of those facilities have endowments that are helping to take care of the significant capital and repair costs. So the idea here is that for those significant projects for which the imagined source is a GO bond in the future, trying to develop additional public-private partnerships to help pay for their significant capital repairs will help us limit the need to go forward for additional property tax increases in the future. Setting that aside and looking at Keno, you know, Keno has some very specific designated uses, Parks and Recs, library, and human services. And these are all the areas and avenues where we as a city serve some of our most vulnerable residents. Yes, everyone enjoys the parks, but these are low-cost alternatives for people who can't afford gym memberships to have a pool or a country club. You know, we have public pools where people can learn to swim and enjoy cooling off in the summer and run on our trails for free. And, you know, the libraries, people can, who can't afford to buy books on Amazon can, or at Barnes and Noble can, can check out books there and access the internet if they can't afford it in their homes. And human services is where we really try to address the most sort of critical emergency needs, shelter, utility assistance. Those, those needs aren't going away. Those needs aren't getting capped as we go into the future. And I think that, that the limited amount of resources in our budget that we dedicate towards addressing some of our most vulnerable citizens need to be maintained, not cut short.
I'm also looking at people that can't even afford housing. We need to make it more affordable for a lot of people. We heard that message from many groups too.
I agree.
Property tax is a big part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. So we proceed on to the next, or we do a round of voting?
No, no, we, we don't vote till Wednesday, right?
I like what you think. Councilman Galore Barrett?
I don't know that anything more really needs to be said about the proposals that I offered since we discussed them at length last time and they've kind of come into discussion this time. You know, what we approved in our last vote on tentative changes is still here. I would, I would add that a lot of the people who are the recipients of, a lot of the people who benefit from the use of libraries, parks, and human services resources aren't necessarily property owners and wouldn't necessarily see the benefit of a property tax cut unless an apartment owner decided to pass that on, which I don't know how likely that is. So that's just the last, that's just the last thing I would add.
Councilwoman Christiansen?
My, my comment is it's not talking about reducing rents. It's talking about not increasing rents when we take care of not increasing property taxes.
But we're, we're not proposing to increase property taxes.
But people will be paying more, more in property taxes, period. Everybody knows it. It's just a fact. And when, when landlords pay more in property taxes, tenants pay more. And that's the, I think, part of the point. But more to the point, what I want to talk about in your proposal, I appreciate what you're doing here, Larry. I am, again, cautious about dipping into the general fund balance, the cash reserves, for obvious reasons. I am convinced that if we're going to do that, it needs to be based on a true emergency or a critical need. And I think the critical need, there's, right now, we're being asked to choose between paying down the debt we have to the police fire pension fund and/or taking care of the issues with our fire apparatus. I think if I had to say so right at this moment, I would probably choose the fire apparatus because it's, it's, it's an emergency need. So I, what I would like to hear is how does Parks and Rec Challenge Grant for a million dollars reach the level of either one of those issues? A long-term, critical need in the, in our police fire pension fund or the, the emergency replacement of fire apparatus? Tell me how a million dollar for Challenge Grant reaches that level of importance. Not that I'm saying the parks and rec are important, because they are, but I don't think it reaches that level. So why don't we either leave that million dollars in our cash reserve or put it towards one or the other of these other important issues?
Well, as you heard our finance director say earlier, there are different reasons for utilizing cash reserve. And in this case, I've heard a lot of you express concern about rising property taxes and rates. The items selected with Parks and Rec are all items in our CIP that are imagined to have a GO bond to fund them. And GO bonds increase the property tax rate. So this is an innovative way to try and leverage and stretch our public dollars, do more public-private partnerships to help us get some of these significant capital repair and replacement projects across the finish line. If you have a better way to do that, I'm open to hearing it.
You're saying it's imagined there'll be GO bonds. That's a whole nother issue for the future. But we're not imagining our police fire pension fund deficit. We're not imagining the, the fire engine problem we have. So I just don't think it raises to that level of importance that we dip into our cash reserves for that. I can support everything else you proposed here, Larry, but not that one million dollars. Because it, it sets, it's a dangerous precedent to take any money out of the reserve. But it's got, and in my opinion, if we're going to do it, it's going to have to be for really, really important things that can't be handled any other way because of the emergency situation or the long-term implications like we've got with the pension.
I think, I think to that point, there is no other way to handle these problems that anyone has deciphered at this point. The CIP does say GO bond for these things, but I think we all realize that that's a pretty unlikely thing that, that it will happen. I mean, given our climate, given the concern. So these, these repairs aren't going, the, the need for these repairs isn't going away. They're just getting more expensive every year.
Judging implies.
Well, you know, last week we heard a lot of testimony, some people concerned about parks and recreation, always drawing the, the short straw on funding. And, you know, one of the great things about Lincoln and the quality of life that people talk about all the times are amazing parks and recreation facilities. If we don't take this opportunity to reinvest in them, we will be looking down the road at, at additional bond and funding and property tax rate increases, perhaps, I don't know. But when we know we do a GO bond, it adds to the property tax rate. It's, it's kind of a no-brainer. And I got to tell you, when I go to different cities around our state of Nebraska, those communities that are growing and in the rural areas are the ones that have reinvested in the quality of their, the life of their parks and, and recreation facilities that make people want to live in, in those communities. And this is just another good investment that we've always done as a city. And you've heard that from the testifiers saying, we need to invest in our parks because that's what matters to families here.
Paid off debt to our, to our police fire pension fund, it would create 800, it should be $80,000 a year, ongoing funds every year in perpetuity that we could spend on parks. But we don't have it to spend on parks right now because we've gone into debt.
You know what? We've taken huge strides to really rectify past years of deficient funding for our pensions. You know, you know, we are at an envious 81% of funding ratios. Most municipalities aren't even coming close to that. We've done some smart things and we've put into place a lot of more practical finance tools that'll keep us on that track to allow future city councils not to go back and, and start readjusting how much they're spending.
We're, we're maybe because we're not as bad as other communities. Okay, but we're still not good.
We're doing smart things. That's the, that's the point. We're doing a lot, lots smarter things on investment and finance for our pensions.
We're getting a little far.
When we worked on this issue, on our, the 13th check and stuff, my biggest concern then, and I said it out loud and I'll say it again, is that we would then, in the future years, say, oh, we fixed this, we don't have to worry about it again.
We haven't fixed it.
Exactly. That's why I'm talking about.
We haven't fixed it, but we have made huge strides.
And that sounds like a good place to stop. We haven't fixed it. We're still working on it.
I'd like to say that, so the thing is, I mean, what John has been proposing with all 4.9 million could help create interest savings. But when you talk about spending more than half of that already on apparatus because of the emergency need, you're not going to achieve that kind of savings in the pension. So it does take massive infusions to, to create the kind of savings you're talking about. And right now, I think we, we have to look at our priorities and clearly we have a disagreement about what those priorities are, although I, I think you do support the apparatus, so.
Clearly, if I'm really, the 4.9, taking out the cash, you're really taking it out of the pension is what you're doing. You're borrowing from the pension at 8% a year.
Councilwoman Melan.
Sure. I just wanted to clarify because I believe I saw on the CIP that beginning in the third year of the CIP, the general fund will be funding 650,000 into this exact program, the match. Is that accurate?
For?
For the. No, not, it's not for the endowment. What did she, what did she say it was for the, I'm sorry? Yeah, the match, yeah.
The CIP 881, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, the, the channel grant, yeah. And I think we looked at the numbers last time we were here and that was.
There is no Challenge Grant Fund established at this point. This would create a.
Okay, so the last time we entertained this, then, the, there was a designated CIP account for this to go into. Has that changed?
No, there wasn't. There is a priority repair and replacement project.
Yeah, and that was the number that was designated on this when it first came forward from, yeah, two weeks ago from Councilwoman Galore Barrett. And so my question is, beginning in the third year, doesn't that have a six? And so my question is, beginning in the third year, doesn't that have a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar funding from the?
Yeah, and I think that's a plan, but that doesn't mean that it's going to be allocated, I guess, in that third year of the budget. I think it all depends on resources available more than anything.
Okay, thank you.
Since there's no appropriations in the first two years.
Other questions? Councilwoman Esquer.
Yeah, I mean, again, this is like, both really important things. And, but what's unique about this plan for the parks, oftentimes, we're playing the game, the zero-sum game. But this is different. You know, this is to encourage new money, new investments from the private sector, matching funds that will help to stretch our public dollars going farther to get, again, to get ahead of the deterioration of parks facilities. So that's, that's what I think sets us apart.
And just to clarify, this wasn't, this didn't have a CIP number in a previous spreadsheet. It always just said general fund parks. Because I think the idea is to try and establish this fund with the Parks Foundation. Now, the kinds of projects that are envisioned for quality of life bond does have a CIP number, but I hadn't, I hadn't listed that in the previous spreadsheets.
Councilwoman Christianson.
I think the assertion here is based on a very interesting assumption is that if it weren't for this million dollars, private donations would not be as great. And I think that's an interesting assumption that I think there's no basis in fact for.
Yeah, so, and I still think, I think we've lost sight of it. As important as our parks and recreation are and in inviting private investment, I think that Councilwoman Christianson's point that this doesn't rise to the level of urgency and critical mass like what we're talking about for police and fire. Also, I think what the arguments that have been made about, well, it means our alternative will be GO bonds, that's giving the people in the city of Lincoln the opportunity to vote on it. And at this point in time, take, drawing it down from the people's reserve funds without giving them the right to vote on it is of concern to me also. I share the concerns because I also read the article and received feedback from the article about York. And they basically are talking about having to double their property tax and still make all the cuts and stop different spending that was referred to by Councilwoman Christianson. And I do think that there's concern, we're not wanting to go down that road and start this precedent, so.
No one's talking about going down that road.
They weren't either.
Councilwoman Rayburn.
The last thought about why we apply for grants is because we really want to leverage our opportunity on doing greater good. Just like when we are applying for the safer grants. I mean, we recognize public safety is quite important in our functions. And that's why we go out for these grant programs. And that's certainly why, you know, we're hopeful that if we can go forward with this grant opportunity and it's successful, that we can really leverage whatever money we're putting in to do a lot greater good, which will take things off the CIP list. And going forward, really trying to be a good fiscal steward of what the funding demands that are all out there.
Other comments or questions? Councilwoman Galer Barrett, did you have other things you wanted to discuss on your proposal? So we have two other, and thank you very much, we have two more. Councilwoman Rayburn, would you be interested in doing yours next?
Yes, you know, we heard some comments, some very helpful comments from people in the audience about, you know, really trying to enhance and get the shelters and the benches for all the bus stops up to par. And I know that we have budgeted roughly about a hundred and thirty-five thousand each year. The total need that we're looking at, outstanding need, to be in compliance to install benches and shelters at all the bus stops is really about fifty-nine going forward. We already have some in existence. So fifty-nine is the total need, and in the budget, we're looking at about thirty-three. And so these additional funds would hopefully help cut that balance of twenty-six shelters and benches that are still outstanding after the next two years. So hopefully, it cuts it about in half. So we're taking funds from the Federal Transportation Authority for, that can only be used for enhancements for shelters, signage, pedestrian, bicycle-related landscaping, and applying it to the bus stops for shelters and benches. And so we're taking roughly ninety-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty out of the funding that is projected to go through at least twenty, 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 twenty-one and reapplying it to twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. So nineteen thousand five hundred and ninety is from the special reserve, and then the balance of seventy-eight thousand three hundred and sixty is from the federal aid. And using it for the additional benches and shelters.
Councilwoman Lamb has a question, comment.
Sure, I just had a question about what, where, what the source was for the special reserves.
The special reserve, it's already listed in, on page one hundred and three of the CIP for Star Trans, special reserves. It looks like, is that eight thousand per year?
Do you want to jump in? Yeah, I'm going to let you clarify.
Special reserves are a mixture of use, of fees, of rates, of general funds. So it's kind of a bucket of dollars. That's what we call special reserves.
But not from property tax or other general funds.
Right, and so I'm just looking at the source. So when you say a bucket of dollars, it's from, it's specifically a bucket generated for Star Trans?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's special reserves for Star Trans.
And so in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, it looks like, is that eight thousand for that bannion?
Can we also clarify, Mickey? It's my understanding that the money that has been identified is from prior years. This is money that has accumulated from prior years, so it's actually already available.
What's great about Jane's proposal is she's asking to take prior appropriation and specifically designating it for benches and shelters so that we can complete the entire program. So she's kind of reaching into prior appropriation and using savings that we already have accumulated, ninety-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty, and putting it into that Fund Oh Eight Six Four. That cleans up the accounting a little bit. It also makes it clear that we're going to spend those dollars on benches and shelters. So, yeah.
Councilwoman Christianson had a question.
No, no questions, just a comment. Jane, this is a good thing.
It is, it's really good.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lamb, then Councilwoman Camp.
Thank you for clarification. I'm not clear from this whether we're looking at splitting it up between the two years or if it's already accumulated funds, are we able to put that right into the first year and get those things done?
If I have a recommendation or preference, I would say to split it over two years, just so we can deliver it over those two years. That would be helpful, so we can deliver it rather than having too much to chew off or bite off in the first year. Thank you for that question.
Councilwoman Camp.
Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Lizzito, would you define where shelters go and where benches go? And are we talking about benches at every place there's a stop sign for Star Trans, or help me understand?
Very good. We have a policy in place due to the update to the transit development plan that we did a few years ago. So the policy is to install benches at stops with fifteen or more daily boardings. And to install shelters at stops with twenty-five or more daily boardings. So because that is a community-based plan, it was clearly vetted through the community, it was passed and adopted by the city council. We're really trying to just stick to that policy. That doesn't mean it can't change in the future. When we do the math, that's about the fifty-nine improvements that Ms. Rayburn has been speaking about.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments about Councilwoman Rayburn's suggested budget changes? Thank you very much. Next, and finally, Councilwoman Lamb, you have some suggestions for our budget.
Thank you. And my suggestions just basically have to do with what's already been presented in the mayor's budget to the people of Lincoln and what was in the budget at the point that they came forward and spoke with us. My first recommendation is that to direct the finance director to reduce property tax rate in the event that the certified valuations come up greater than those anticipated and already budgeted. And I guess I would compare that to if you, if you had wrecked your car and you had an insurance, or excuse me, a repair facility that gave you a price on the repair, and you went ahead with that price and put your car in, and then your insurance company sends a couple hundred dollars extra. The repair place shouldn't get your money just because your insurance company paid better. And so I'm thinking that this honors the agreement that we have, or the understanding that the people of Lincoln have with us with regards to the amount of property tax we're looking to generate under what we currently believe is the valuation or what they believed it would be. And I know that every year, it comes in a little bit higher, that, you know, sometimes greater than others. And so that is my proposal. And I worked with the finance department in order, and Sherry for budgeting, to make sure that the numbers were correct, on task with what was presented in the budget. It made it a little more specific. So I appreciate their help on that so that we knew exactly what we were looking at. And then the second proposal is that any general fund delinquent property tax revenues that would be received by the city in excess of the two point eight million, which is already appropriated each year to, again, support the mayor's budget, that that would be transferred and appropriated to Street Improvement Fund. And, you know, every year, a certain number of people, they pay their property taxes late. And so the finance department estimates what will be on time and what will be late. And my understanding and going and visiting with them was that already two point eight million that was, would be expected in delinquent taxes, was already appropriated in the budget, each year's of the mayor's budget. And so my recommendation is anything in excess of that be transferred and appropriated to the Street Improvement Fund in order that we can help meet some of the needs and close the gap that was identified by the Transportation Coalition.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lamb. Questions, comments, discussions about these two proposals?
Do we have any response?
Yeah, so a little bit on the first one. In the past, typically, so, finance makes estimates, and then we get certification evaluations, they do August twentieth. So that's also the same night that the budget's going to be adopted for us. In the past, those have historically went to lower balances that are utilized within the budget. So we have, as you know, per the charter, we can only appropriate ninety percent of the taxes that we so that ten percent is then kind of carried over and then utilized within the next year's budget. So a couple of things that I would recommend that we follow that practice of lowering those balances. And I'd probably say due to a few reasons. One, I think, you know, any budget carries risk. Sales tax is the greatest revenue stream for the general fund at forty-eight percent. It's the most economically sensitive. You know, we are on a recession cycle, which could occur, you know, within the next couple of year period, you never know. I think that allows some hedging against that if it would occur. You know, we do look at sales tax from a statistical perspective over the last twenty-five years. You know, and it's fell, it's fell within the range at a ninety-five percent confidence level between three point two four percent and six point, six percent on the high end. So we are within that range. However, if a recession occurred, we would probably likely fall out of that. Current trends right now, we're at about two point three percent for sales tax as of July.
Do we stop there for a second?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I did not see the story about York, but I did see an article last week from Professor Goss from Omaha that talked about the timing of economic corrections. And you touched on it a little bit. I'm concerned about that. I have, this is my first budget cycle, I have not sit through a correction. Do you have any ideas on how much we could possibly lose or historical data on sales tax? And we base a lot of our budget on sales tax.
Yeah, like I said, forty-eight percent for the general fund. I think, you know, the last recession for two thousand eight, the sales tax dipped negative. You know, I don't, I don't think that's, that is not the case typically for all recessions. I think if you go back to two thousand three, it probably dipped to one to two percent, you know, which is compared to the four percent that we're, we have been experiencing recent years. So, you know, we probably are subject, I don't know, depending on what type of recession could occur, maybe to a one, two, two percent draw.
Okay, so, Councilwoman Lamb, I mean, Councilman Camp first, then Councilwoman.
I just remind my colleagues that in the past too, I've had a similar measure to this, where I've said the excess with that evaluation go into the pension plan. I think we had a hundred thousand dollars a few years back that did go in.
Councilwoman Lamb.
And so my understanding is when we get that excess, though, it goes into our fund balance?
Yes, it goes into the overall general fund.
Which right now is ten percent above what we require, and which is the same figure that my colleague is looking to take at least four point nine million dollars out.
Yes, here's, I guess, one thing moving forward. So a couple of things. Yes, we do have adequate fund balance right now. I think I've said that to this body. You know, that's taking a portion of that. There is a change in budget practice with this budget. Before, we were not budgeting delinquent property taxes. So, and that's what I believed helped build up the surpluses over time to where we have a current adequate fund balance. With the change of budgeting, that is a revenue source that we are relying on moving forward that won't be available at year-end as we look at those fund balances. So I guess I do have concern that, you know, with, you know, sales tax being a, I think we budgeted a three point five percent increase, then we also budgeted those delinquent taxes moving forward, that there is some risk associated with this budget that we come to year-end and we won't, potentially, we'll have deficits or surpluses. I mean, the flexibility built within the budget from a revenue standpoint is not as great as it was in the past.
Say that again?
Okay, so, delinquent revenues, we were receiving, but not counting on as a budgeted revenue. This budget shifts that to, we will be receiving, but we are also counting on that as a budgeted revenue. So counting on that and having, trying to utilize, or utilizing the prior year balances to balance the current year budgets would potentially make this more difficult at year-end moving forward to keep having surpluses.
So may that be a good idea to draw down?
It's unlikely that our fund balance will continue to grow at the rate that it has. Agreed?
Agreed.
Councilman Camp has a question, I think.
So we're being more aggressive and using funds. And we're talking about part of this too, of being aggressive on the Keno revenues, going four percent higher there. So basically, we're taking a degree of flexibility out of our budget.
Yeah, and I think that flexibility was then utilized to add police. So, you know, it added to the expenditure side of the budget.
So essentially, by anticipating that, we've increased expenditures because we've assumed, we're taking more of the revenue that otherwise was kind of icing on the cake.
There was, yeah, an increase in expenditures that offset. I think one thing that I've, I've always approached budgets and, you know, I ask everybody within the city to approach the budget this way, is that we budget what we receive. And this is a budget, this is a revenue that we have continued to receive, so we need to budget that moving forward.
So was it your idea to budget the delinquent taxes?
Yes.
I just want to clarify.
Because it's ongoing revenue.
Councilwoman Galer Barrett, please.
We're not budgeting the Keno at four percent higher than we do today. We're taking it from three to four percent, so it's one percent increment. Not as aggressive, that's what I'm trying to say. I just want to clarify that because people are saying four percent more. It's not four percent more than where it's been.
Other questions or comments or math tips?
I'm good.
We're good. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. That actually wrapped up session, I thought. So we have finished the budget portion of the program. We have a director's meeting scheduled for two. We will take a break and see you all back here about five to two.